Good evening and welcome, everybody. We have a full house, which is wonderful to see. I'd like to call to order the April 20th, 2015. Oh, I apologize. Adjourned private session. Do I have a motion to adjourn private session? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Action. Did Mrs. McAvoy make the motion? And Mr. Schubager second.
You're welcome.
Now, I'll call to order the April 20th, 2015 regular meeting of the Lacy Township Board of Education. Adequate notice of this meeting was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on January 7th, 2015 by posting the notice in the Fork River Post Office and the Lenox Harbor Post Office and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacy Township Clerk as required by the open public meeting law. If you please stand and salute the flag. My flag is the flag of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the agenda meeting?
Prove. Second.
Vote.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Abstain.
Thank you.
Mrs. DeSensis.
Yes.
Mr. Geer-Donna.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to move the minutes of the regular meeting on March 16th?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Abstain.
Mrs. DeSensis.
Yes.
Mr. Geer-Donna.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes.
And do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the private session held on March 16th, 2015?
Prove.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Abstain.
Mrs. DeSensis.
Yes.
Mr. Geer-Donna.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes.
And turning to page 33, do I have a motion to approve the payment of the bill totaling
Motion. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensis.
Yes, on all, but I have 29 exceptions, and I'm gonna hand you a list, and I have to abstain on item 206-100, the NJ SBA workshops payment for myself, and no on item 260-527, and I'm gonna pass along the list.
Mr. Geer-Donna.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes, do I have to abstain on the motion for myself that got the NJ?
Yes.
Okay, then abstain on that and yes to everything else.
Mr. Schubager.
No.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Downey.
Yes. That's okay.
And do I have a motion through the adoption of this?
Prove, please.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensis.
Yes.
Mr. Geer-Donna.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes.
Onto page 34, Mr. Stein, do you have anything more at this time?
I will have some. Put the end of the meeting.
Thank you. Our student representatives, who would like to start tonight?
I'll start tonight. So, we're getting towards the end. We're really pushing prom right now. We got our tickets down to $75, which we're actually really, really happy with. We didn't have much to work with coming in this year, but we made the best out of what we could with the speedball tournament and the sweatshirt sales, and of course, the senior raffle, which everyone did an outstanding job with. We ended up selling all the tickets. Actually, Liz Arvina sitting in the front really helped us push in the end there by selling the last few. The invitations for prom are in, we're working on it right now. Students will get them when they buy their prom bid. Ticket sales are May 5th, 6th, and 7th. And on the topic of senior t-shirts, everyone needs to put their sizes into the Google Docs form that this is the policy sent out in order for us to actually order the t-shirts. So, if you know anyone that hasn't done so.
So, this week, the freshman and sophomore class will be running a fundraiser called Rent a Senior, where they will literally rent a senior and make them do whatever they want. It's on April 23rd at 6:30 PM, and it's $5 per person to get in, and then you'll pay however much the senior goes for. Elections for the freshman class treasurer was held today for next year. The sophomores will be holding a speedball redemption tournament, and that's May 26th and 27th, and signups are May 12th, 13th, and 14th after school in N100. The sophomores will also be holding a senior send-off spirit week, which is very nice. And Monday will be Hawaiian Shirt Day. Tuesday will be superheroes versus villains, and upperclassmen will be villains and underclassmen will be superheroes. Wednesday is Whiteout Wednesday. Thursday is college t-shirt day, and Friday is Lacy Pride. For the juniors, the junior cruise ticket sales, I think they were last week, and then there's one more day this week that they can sell them, because there's 20 tickets left. May 4th will be their Kiss a Senior Goodbye fundraiser, and they're opening it up to the whole school this year instead of just the parents, so you can buy like a little bag of Hershey kisses and send it to a senior with a message on it. And Mr. Lacy is coming up, and signups for senior boys will be April 27th to May 8th in W108, and there's a meeting in W108 on Monday, May 11th at 1:40 PM. And rehearsals will be May 15th, May 20th, and the show is Thursday, May 21st at 6:00 PM, and it's $5 to enter. And the next SGI meeting is Wednesday, May 13th at 6:30 in the lecture hall. This month's unsung hero is someone who is quiet but makes an everlasting impression on everyone he meets. Ever since Doug was a young boy, Doug Bates was a hero. Around the school, Doug always makes sure to have a helping hand ready to assist. In school, Doug is involved in many clubs and activities, including National Honor Society. Doug makes sure that no matter what the event, he is the first one to sign up for everything. In addition, Doug makes sure to be polite to other students, even if it means holding the door for an entire class of people. Doug is one of the main caregivers for his elderly mother. Doug and his family were also affected by Hurricane Sandy and lost their home. While taking care of his mother and house, he also maintains high grades and has been honorable since 7th grade. This man, this young man shows what it is, what it takes to be a hero, and this is why Doug Bates is this month's unsung hero. So, Doug, do you want to come over here?
Thank you very much. And Doug, are any of your friends or family here? Would you like to wave your hand? Thank you. And Dr. Brower, superintendent report. I know you want to share with us tonight.
I do. I'll have an opportunity later, next month, spend time with Doug and his family at a county meeting where he'll be recognized, and it'll be an honor to be there with him and his family. So, at this time, Mr. Hanchu, principal of Lacy High School, also has some students that he would like to recognize as well.
My thanks, Dr. Brower. My pride, green April's Senior of the Month. If I may ask the board to join us on the side so people can watch the screen. Our first student is Liz Arvenitis, so Liz, would you please come down and join me? And while Liz is walking this way, if we can get away from Liz's parents down in the front row, give a round of applause for them, please.
Hello, I'm Mr. Hanchu, and welcome to Senior Spotlight April, where we meet our outstanding seniors of the month. Joining me now is Liz Arvenitis. Liz is ranked in the top 5% of her class and is currently taking three advanced placement courses. She's also very involved with extracurricular activities. Liz, can you tell us about the challenges of taking such a number of tough courses and working on other activities?
Well, really what I found about this year is the block scheduling helps a lot. You have way more time to do stuff, and AP classes are really independent, so just having like that time to get stuff done really helps, and I have positive experiences.
I'm glad you liked the block schedule. There's a lot of work put into that, but we knew we were the students and our staff. Can you tell us about some of the extracurricular community activities that you're involved with?
I do a lot of community service through FGA and Branches, and I'm super involved in that. And then with my church, I do a lot of missions work and stuff in the community. Over the summer, I actually went to Bolivia and volunteered in the orphanage, and it was an incredible experience.
That's amazing experience. What did you learn from that?
It just, it was really a culture shock, just the poverty that's down there, and there's like garbage in the streets and stuff like that, and it really made me appreciate like what I have, and it really got me fired up to do something about it and to kind of dedicate my life to helping impoverish my community.
So, it's a real life-altering experience, I'm sure.
Yeah, it changed my whole course of like my career path.
Excellent. What do you like to do outside of school?
When I have time, I pretty much just nap and watch Netflix.
Yeah, Netflix, too. A lot of good stuff you could watch on there, education and entertainment.
Yes, documentary.
Yes, they do. Where are your future plans?
I'm going to Florida University next year, and that's like right in Manhattan on the Upper East Side, so be involved in the city and have that urban experience, which I'm pretty excited about.
It's a great school, they're lucky to have you. Congratulations, Liz, on your selection of Senior of the Month. We'll be right back with Owen Hope.
The whole board were very proud of you and lucky to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing our place.
Aw, thank you.
All right, next is Owen Hope. And if Owen's here with his family, please wave to us. Hi, Owen.
Welcome back to Senior Spotlight April. Now joining us is Senior of the Month, Owen Hope. Owen is ranked in the top 20% of his class and is a three-year letter winner and the captain of this year's soccer team. Can you tell us about your career in soccer here at Lacy Township High School?
Yeah, well, you know, it's been a really good career. I started off, I was a sophomore. I had Mr. Diargangelo as my coach for these, the past, my first two years at On Varstie, which was just an April experience, and fortunately, he had to leave, and we got a new coach, but I was just as equally greatly experienced. And, you know, this year was a little rough with our schedule and what we had to go through, but we were able to make it through it, and it was a good season.
Being in A-South's a tough thing, but I think we really played well.
Yeah, yeah. A-South was one of our biggest challenges, I would say, moving up, and it was playing against a lot of tougher competition than we would normally face when we were in B-South.
All right, you have a strong interest in computer science and cybersecurity, and you self-taught yourself the Java code. Can you tell us about your interest in computers?
Yeah, well, it really started out probably in the 8th grade when I got this computing book in Java from my dad. My dad borrowed from me. My dad probably had a lot to do with it, because he's a computer engineer, and just what he does is interesting to me, so I figured I should maybe look into this a little bit more. As of right now, I'm also taking a class at OCC, just more in the computer science field that I couldn't learn before I go to college, I figured it would be good.
Excellent field to get involved in. What do you like to do outside of school?
Outside of school, I like to just hang around with my friends. You know, I work out, go to the gym, run, watch TV, just pretty much whatever. Whenever I have some free time, I like to just hang out.
All right, our biggest question, what are your future plans?
Well, I'm gonna be going away to NJIT for college, which I'm very excited about. I've put my deposit down, I'm all set to go. Also, I'm hoping to be able to play soccer there when I do get time to film.
That's great. Great school, and once again, they're gonna be very happy to have you there, you did an awesome job. Congratulations, Owen, on your selection of student Senior of the Month.
Owen, on behalf of the whole school board, congratulations, and congratulations on a wonderful school.
Thank you.
And I'd like you to stay in New Jersey, come back to us, please.
Our vocational education student is Eric Sullivan. Is Eric here? I didn't see him walk in, but does mean he's not amongst us, Eric. All right, without further ado, let's have a round of applause for Eric, please. We'll play our team's quarter tape, so.
Welcome back to Senior Spotlight April, where we meet our outstanding seniors of the month. Joining me now is vocational Senior of the Month for April, Eric Sullivan. Eric, can you tell us about what you do in the program at Vocational School?
Mostly just work on motorcycles. We go over basic like operations of the engine, parade systems and suspensions. Right now, we're actually doing the end of the year knockoff test that we have, which you have to measure out most like cylinder boards and all that other stuff, just getting stuff down to like thousands of an inch and close, I guess you can call it, to make sure everything's spot on.
Sounds pretty complicated. What made you choose motorsports technology at Vocational School?
Mostly, like the year before, I started getting into racing quads, so I really got into, you know, like how to make more power out of an engine. My father runs motorcycles. My uncle, my mom rides motorcycles, too, so it's always been like a family thing, always been helping my dad out.
So, with motorsports and racing, what made you tie both of those things together?
Well, when I got into racing, it was my friend got me into racing, so like I was like, well, maybe you always try to make yourself better, you always try to have nicer stuff, make sure your bike's always down to a tee. So, I figured if I go motorsports and learn about all that kind of stuff, I can make my bike, I guess you could call it dialed in, make it all nice and, I don't know how to explain it, but it's hard to explain it, and it's just short sentences, but it's just nice to have everything all set up perfectly, how you like it, so when you go to a race, everything's ready for you.
So, if you're running well, it's a difference between winning and losing.
Pretty much.
What are your future plans?
After high school, I'm gonna be attending UTI for diesel mechanic, industrial program. I was kind of hoping, I wasn't really hoping, I was planning on doing good there and getting good grades, and then maybe after UTI program, I was gonna go, they have a Cummins course there that you can specialize in. I wanted to do that, because I own a Cummins, so I'm kind of interested in that stuff. After that, get a job, full-time job, make some money.
Well, hey, good luck, I'm sure you're gonna be successful. Congratulations, Eric, on your selection of Senior of the Month. Thank you for joining us on Senior Spotlight April, we'll see you next month.
I'll thank Dr. Brower, Board of Education, for this opportunity to share with you some of our elite students in the month of April. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, I would like to just offer for our students that are here tonight, if you want to take this opportunity, we'll continue now with a brief section of my superintendent's report and then right to the budget report. So, you are more than welcome to stay, but you are more than welcome to go as well and start your studies. Thank you so much, we are so proud of you. I will see you shortly, and thank you for coming. So, by now, you've realized that this year, we initiated a new program where we have our schools and our students adopting the tougher of the superintendent's report along with the board agenda. So, I invite you to visit us on our website or take a copy. I'm so proud of our students. Today's artwork is provided by our high school students and the Office of Special Services. So, I just want to highlight a few things. First, I want to recognize our school leadership and all of our music teachers for celebrating the love and beauty of music in our schools in the month of March. There were lots of concerts and celebrations. I particularly want to take note of Lenox Harbor. I noticed that this month, you're recognizing Music Students of the Day, which I think is pretty awesome, so I wanted to mention that as well. Also, Lenox Harbor, I want to also share with the board that I have invited Ryan Lang next month, because he just took 5th place nationally in Invest Right essay competition, and I believe Darlene Price is his teacher, and so we're going to extend the invitation to Ryan and his family to join us here next month. Look for that, please. Fork River continues to share all that they can, and this month highlighted their work with the Lacy Food Bank, and so I wanted to put a shout out there. I want to thank the district supervisors, Ms. Keller, Mr. Zelinski, Michelle Amos, and the leadership of Dr. Clark, the work that they did for the kindergarten orientation. I can't believe that we're recognizing and welcoming new kindergarteners to our school. I think it was class of 2028, is that right, Dr. Clark?
28, yes.
28. I don't know what happened. And I also want to share a few things with you that are on, that are on my calendar this week. I hope that you might consider supporting the Christopher Blows and Chess Tournament, that'll be held at Lenox Harbor Firehouse on Friday. Fork River Drama Performance is also on Friday, along with Cedar Creek's Drama Performance on Thursday, and so I want to welcome you to those performances, as well as Jazz Night at the Middle School tomorrow. So, lots of wonderful things happening here in Lacy Schools. So, at this point, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask the board to keep their seats, because they have a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that I'm going to use to navigate through tonight's budget presentation, and I just want everyone to know that tonight's presentation is an opportunity for me to present in full to the board for the first time in their entirety here. They will hear the presentation, there'll be an opportunity for you to ask questions, and that will be at the end, and then the board will consider this budget for adoption at the next board meeting, if there is no vote on the budget tonight. Okay.
Do you want me to control it?
Yeah, you can control it for me. What about Ryan? Do you want to?
Yeah, we could just do the middle one, if that's all right. There were, but there's so many people that they.
Well, isn't that too bad? For me?
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry.
I don't like it.
Yeah, I'll control it. Hmm? No, that one wasn't. The one up there is. I can put that one on if you want. No, no, that's fine. Just give me a moment.
Testing. Can you hear in the back? Can you hear me in the back? All right, we have a sound check in the back. Okay, so, thank you all, thank you for sharing your space. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Tonight, it's a pleasure, my distinct pleasure, to present to you 2015-16 school budget. I want to recognize some of the wonderful pictures that we've included on the montage here, pointing out to you at the bottom, making student achievement our top priority. Over on the left, one of the new clubs that was added this past year, ice hockey, and all of the wonderful things that are happening in our schools. Service, learning, technology, giving, teaching, incredible opportunities happening in our classrooms each and every day, so I'm happy to highlight those for you. The budget process starts in December, in January, and it is a very cyclical process, so it starts at the school level, it starts at the department level, it starts at the classroom level, where people are submitting requisitions, things that they need, things that they feel that they want to produce programs. It then moves over to the right, sort of at 3 o'clock, January and February, we are at now district and central office level, where the budget sits there, and we continue to refine it, identify priorities and things that we can and can't do, and really work through the parameters of the budget. Following at 6 o'clock, February and March, it goes to committee. This Board of Education works in committee, and we have three committees that are very active. We have a finance facilities committee, we have a finance operations committee, we have a curriculum committee, and a policy committee. So, all of those committees work within the framework of their charge, and then they provide direction and feedback, and then in April and May, the budget comes to the full board. So, in this fiscal year 2016, there were probably four prongs of priorities, and the first one was to make sure that we were supporting and enhancing our current programs. The next, maximizing efficiencies and personnel management. The next is maintaining facilities and our community services, and under this category, really tucking in the Safe Schools initiatives that this board is so very committed to. And then lastly, also with the same level of commitment, to make sure that they were minimizing the tax impact, they understand and know the influence and the decisions that they make and those that they have on the taxpayer, both for people who live here in the community and send their children to learn here, and also those who do not have children in the school system but are very committed to it. In the area of maintaining facilities and services, there's three highlights that I want to point out, and the first one really is that this board has made an investment in school security. Last year, we added two full-time security officers to our schools. We continue, this budget continues to provide for front office greeters, providing additional supervision and information, feeding back to the administration on people who are visiting our schools. We also do have a security system here in our school system, particularly in the key areas, and also this board made a very strong investment in making sure that our doors are always locked with a kiosk system. So, those commitments and to the support of just a few of those highlights, I think, are important. The next is courtesy busing. Courtesy busing continues to be in this budget. By law, our students are only needed to be provided transportation if they're two and two and a half miles. We provide busing for all students. Although some of our children do decide to walk to school, we do provide busing for all students, and so that is entitled courtesy busing, and that is currently in the budget. And lastly, recreational and nonprofit facility access. Again, this is very important, our commitment to the assets that we have here, and the board's commitment to making sure that our facilities are open to the community when they need and want them. For our nonprofits, there are no charges, but for our profits, they do pay a nominal fee to have our facilities, but basically, our facility. they do pay a nominal fee to have our facilities. But basically, our facilities are open 24/7 here if organizations want to use them. And that commitment really is first and foremost for our students because of all the recreation programs. And so this budget does provide for the maintenance of facilities and services. In the next area, we will experience some personnel changes in this particular budget, and there will be reductions. And I want to be very, very clear about this. I have them highlighted. This board has been very clear with me as the superintendent that although positions did need to be cut, we are going to make sure that we have a place for anyone who is affected. That is the first thing that was asked. It continues to be asked. Even though the answer is the same, it is very, very important to this board. So although we're cutting positions, this board recognizes that there are people behind those positions and have charged to make sure that we do find opportunities for them. But some of those positions will be cut through attrition. The two teaching positions, one right now is slated to be reduced at the middle school, and one is slated to be reduced at the high school, and those will be through attrition. The next is to reduce one secretarial position, and that will be reduced through attrition. Although we do anticipate that there might be some movement, that position will be cut through attrition. And then lastly, the reduction of five aides in health offices. Currently, all of our nursing services offices, our nurses' offices, have a health aide in there with them. The proposal is that we will have only one, and that health aide will float between and among schools. We recognize that sometimes there are busy times of the season, whether it be sports, physicals, or any other event that's happening, and we're prepared to provide per diem support. Two of those positions will be cut through attrition, and the others, we will keep one floater position. And then the other positions, we are going to actively make sure that we can find a position for those people who will be affected. So those will be probably the most significant personnel changes in this budget. There are other changes. Those changes that are not on here are particularly affect our administration in the area of supervision for detention monitoring, et cetera. Those stipends and those monies are also not in the budget. But these are the ones that I think are the majority of the positions that you would be interested in. So in the area of support for instructional programs, again, when I talk about priorities and what is very important to this Board of Education, it continues to be student programs and the instructional programs that support learning and teaching. This budget provides still favorable class size in K4. We will experience some shift because we do have a changing population. Some of our students in our special education population will require additional support, so we do anticipate some changes, but no cuts to positions in that area. Also, there is a commitment to excellence in our regular ed special education instructional programs in pre-K12. Even though we did have to make some cuts to this budget, the original budget build was much higher than we could have ever, we could afford in this budget with a 2% cap. But very closely, we were committed to making sure that the cuts stayed away from the classroom and focused on the instructional programs pre-K12. And then lastly, the support for instructional programs in instructional technology, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that, and I have some slides to highlight, this board's commitment to the vision. And the vision really comes from you, from our teachers, from our students, from our parents. The board has embarked on a strategic planning. They also heard the need, desire, and want for additional technology. And I can certainly share on behalf of my colleagues and the leadership in the schools and district level, this is a high priority for us. So I would take this next information right out of Michael Fulon's Work Stratus sphere, and he basically says 2015 is the year of action for technology in schools K12 like no other. We are at a turning point, a critical turning point, where schools will need to, must, must include technology in their programs for our students to be competitive, motivated, interested in their learning. Fulon says that technology is irresistibly engaging for students and teachers. You know that if you're a parent, if you're a teacher, or if you're a student. You know the power of what these devices provide. Devices must be efficient, and they must be easy to use. And that is consistently a rally cry for when people are looking to purchase devices or when teachers have devices in the classrooms, they need to have them easy to use. They need to be technologically ubiquitous, 24/7. They need to be everywhere, everywhere seamlessly, transparent everywhere. And that is what we know and understand about the classroom of today. The classroom of today, the classroom of tomorrow. We will never go back to a classroom without technology. It just will not happen. And that technology must be steeped in real-life problem solving because that is the access demand that our students have, need, and want for technology. So this budget proposes one-to-one technology for teaching for all high school teachers. The budget provides for putting one device in the hands of every teacher at the high school. We do have an aging network with our Apples. Our high school teachers know that, so they are ready for new devices. So the proposal is for every student, every teacher, rather, to have a one-to-one device. This is going to provide ongoing collaboration with our students, creating opportunities for teachers to explore new pedagogical structures, structures that, the pedagogy of teaching and learning, the process of teaching and learning. It allows for teachers to create digital course materials and unlimited access to online resources. But there's more, active engagement with project-based learning. And that segues us to the next piece, which is this budget provides one-to-one technology for all high school students, nine through 12. Every student will have either an HP Stream or a Chromebook-type device, so that they will be given that. We currently have a one-to-one program for some of our students right now in our STEM classes. They have an iPad. Some do have a Chromebook. They don't take them home, I don't believe. But this would be placing a device in the student's hands that they would have with them for all four years. So all students, all teachers at the high school. So for students, it would mean ongoing collaboration with teachers and peer learners, bringing the outside world to inside the classroom, personalized learning, and executive functioning skills for learning. So very often, it's, this comprises students using Evernote, students using calendaring options, students using all of the productivity tools that are available to them with a device such as this. So we would be embedding that. Right now, there's a freshman focus class, and we can envision some of those lessons being embedded right in there. And also textbooks and resources on demand. We know it. It sort of goes without saying that our students much prefer working with an engaging, dynamic textbook online, if that even will be a word in 10 years, the word textbook. But the opportunities are out there for our students to have a very, very versatile and document on demand when they're looking for information. Everyone benefits, and I'm going to turn the microphone now over to Dr. Clark, who is going to talk with you a little bit about how everyone is going to benefit. Dr. Clark?
Thank you, Dr. Brower. So as Dr. Brower has been discussing, we are in the planning stages of the one-to-one initiative. Assuming that devices were to begin, the one-to-one devices were to begin at the high school level, one of the things that we know we can celebrate is that there are approximately 360 devices, to include Chromebooks, laptops, and iPads. If that implementation were to start at the high school, and again, we're in the planning phase of this project, we know that those devices could be shifted down to the elementary grades. And right away, some of the benefits that we think about when those devices land at the elementary grades is to alleviate some of our testing procedures. So we've talked about NWA MAP testing, measures for academic progress, and those are computer-based tests. And so we know that if we move those devices to the elementary grades, we can certainly free up our computer labs, and there will be no loss of instructional time. So in addition to being able to say that we are implementing a one-to-one initiative, we can certainly say that we are helping all of our students by the time we are done with the project. We can also say that the additional devices will assist in the administration of PAR testing. It's probably not the thing we want to talk about tonight as we are recovering from the April or the spring administration of PAR testing, but we know PAR will come around again even as we finish the end-of-year PAR testing. So next spring, we'll be in an even better position to administer the PAR test. And I have to say, after the spring administration, we're in good shape, but we can always do things to improve and say that we're in great shape for implementation. And certainly, we can say that additional devices shifting to our schools and programs can provide students the opportunities to engage in key 21st century skills, and that would be communicating, collaborating, and creating. So that one-to-one environment would allow all those things to happen. So we've highlighted there on the slide instructional time gain for NWA and PAR, and everyone is part of the Long Rage Plan. In 2016-17, the middle school and Mopon students and staff will then receive their devices. And then in the 17-18 school year, the plan continues for implementation for Forkett River, Lenoka Harbor, and Cedar Creek. So again, it's been a process. We're still in the planning stages, but we're definitely headed in an excellent direction. And so let's talk a little bit about professional development for the one-to-one initiative. We know that any new initiative requires a well-thought-out process from start to finish, and a part of that process will be to develop an effective professional development plan. So that's why we ask the question of why. So we know that teachers at Lacy Township High School, again, we're starting at the high school for devices for our students and our teachers, we know that teachers have varying levels of skills in the implementation of technology. And so our goal is that we spend time developing a professional development plan because we know that great teachers help create great students. And we cannot assume that all of our teachers will be handed a device, and not that they're not going to know how to turn them on, we're way past that, but actually using all of the tools that are available to them. And on the next slide is just a little glimpse, and it's certainly not an exhaustive list, a glimpse of what will be offered in professional development. So when we talk about Google Apps, our district has been a Google App environment for quite some time, but Google Apps always has something new. A new app is added to the suite, and it's a learning curve for all of us when anything new is introduced. Just today, you'll see halfway down the list, Khan Academy for New Learning. I learned today that Khan Academy has partnered with the College Board to introduce free, and I'm going to reiterate, free, online tools for students to prepare for the SAT. And so that's going to be available by June 2015. That's around the corner. And so that would be a professional development session that we would afford our teachers so that they, in turn, could turnkey that to our students and prepare them for what's available through Khan Academy. So again, the list is certainly not the entire list, but we've provided some of the highlights. TEDx. I don't know if any of you in the audience have heard about TEDx, but TEDx was introduced to many of our teachers during our Professional Development Day on March 13. We had a gentleman do a presentation on how to create a TEDx. And if you ever get the opportunity to go to the TEDx website or listen to a TED Talk, very, very valuable professional development and an online resource that can be used in the classroom for not just staff, but for students as well. So we wanted to just begin to paint a picture of what professional development would look like, and when would we take the opportunity to do that? And that would be this summer during our Summer Professional Development Academy. I believe we're going to be in our third year. Our Summer PD Academy has been a huge success here in Lacy Township. We would also take advantage of faculty meetings and PLCs during the day, so building-based PLCs to deliver this professional development. So lots more discussion to be had on what that is going to look like, but we're definitely excited about the direction that that is going in. And finally, there are some requisite needs for a one-to-one plan, and that would be to increase the wireless access points. If you look above your head, that white box with the blue light is a wireless access point. And we cannot expect to introduce 2,000 additional devices and expect them all to connect seamlessly to the Internet if we don't increase those wireless access points. So that's certainly included in the plan. And also, additional technology staff to support the implementation. And I know that Mr. Sayak is here, our supervisor of informational technology, and I think he would be the first to agree that if we threw 2,000 additional devices at his department without getting some support, it would not be a successful implementation. And so that is included in the plan as well. So again, we are very excited. Lots of work to do, but we're excited to get the work done. So I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Brower.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. There's also a few new things in the budget that I just wanted to point out, that we're also looking to support our high school guidance program with additional programming to expand our Lola program, the Lacy Online Learning Academy, offer a program of college exploration and transition, and college mentoring program, and a high school mentoring program as well. Also, in this budget, we have included new teams for boys and girls volleyball at the middle school. So how are we going to get there? What is the budget plan? And at this time, I will start to show you some numbers. So our operating expenditures are here, and now is probably a great time to tell you that if you're interested in the presentation, it'll be online on our website tomorrow morning, along with this PowerPoint, and when our technology staff is able to produce the video for you on demand. You can see that there is a slight increase in instruction and student services at .93%, tuition at 5% approximately, administration is down almost 4%, capital outlay is up 13.66%, and that is due to the need to replace school buses that have aged out. That is not a discretionary cost. We must do that. We cannot put those buses on the road when they outlive their life. Operations up slightly a 3%, transportation is down, personnel services, which includes benefits, workers' comp, pension, and tuition reimbursements, 3.12%. And our total operating budget is proposed to increase and change 1.52% or $988,256. So that is a summary slide of our operating expenditures and shown in a pie. We are a labor-intensive organization. We employ people to teach our children here who come to school. And so the majority of our costs go to instruction and student services. The other large majority goes to supporting the employees who work here. A small increase in tuition, which I mentioned, and those are for students who require out-of-district placements. The light blue is our transportation slice, our operations. In purple, capital outlay barely gets an orange slice, and the administration as well. To support those expenditures, the other side of that is the revenues. And so we are looking at a local tax levy change of about $1 million, a 2.48% change. State aid is flat, zero. You might hear that we were, districts were provided funding for our PAR test. It depends on where you took the money from to put it back in. They reduced one line item, and they put it in another at Colton Park. The net result is zero. There is no increase in state aid. We are planning to appropriate $1.7 million in budgeted fund balance. I'll go down miscellaneous revenue stayed the same, semi-Medicaid reimbursement, a slight increase there, and a total operating budget increase of 1.5. slight increase there, and a total operating budget increase of 1.52%. And let me share with you a nine-year range of our school tax rate. And that gives you the tax rate at a glance, but at the bottom, you'll see for 2015-16, estimated about 2.45 cents. The average home, which is assessed at approximately $350,000, Mr. Savage?
3.
What is it?
247.
I was using last year's number. It was a reassessment, 247. And $39 increase per year or $3.25 per month. So in summary, our total budget has increased 900, the proposal for the budget that the board would consider taking action on next month. The total budget has increased $920,556, a 1.31% increase. The general fund proposal would be $988,256, a 1.52% increase. The general fund tax levy, so that's just the general fund, has increased $1,027,145, a 2.48% increase. And the total tax levy, which includes debt service, increasing $925,690, a 2.05 increase. And so you might say, you know, was everything in there? And I'm here to tell you absolutely not. There are leaders in the room, and they're going to tell you, no, not everything that we wanted got into the budget. There are priorities that we have to process. So there were some additional instructional materials that we wanted for regular and special education programs, so we'll seek to continue to fill those requests. We do get entitlement money from No Child Left Behind, so we'll look to see if we can fund that with our grant money. New textbooks, additional curriculum writing, professional development, an additional psychologist, an additional high school counselors, some additional basic skills programs, some additional coaches and co-curricular, more surveillance cameras, some new furniture, and after-school programs and bleachers. So it's important that you know that we make some very difficult decisions, and there are things that we want for our students, and there are things that we want for our teaching staff, and we can't have everything all at once. So it's important that we recognize what we do envision, and then when we do have an opportunity, if we come through, like I said, grant money or something else that is not funded by the taxpayer, then that's where we'll focus that attention to. And in summary, I think you're going to, there we go. What goals are preserved in this budget? And there probably are four, I think that we identified, that there's movement forward for technology-enhanced classrooms in our schools, that our schools are safe, they're secure, and they're well-maintained. Had an opportunity to visit a few schools these past few months, and every time I'm at a school, I call Mr. Savage, and I tell him what an outstanding job his staff under his leadership are doing because these schools are quite amazing. And so that's very important to this board, it's very important to you as the community, and if you're an employee here and you work here, you know how important that is. Quality educational programs delivered by dedicated and talented staff. I had an opportunity today to meet with the middle school staff, and I said to them that I just don't know this, everyone knows this. We had almost 100 people in the room last month for the strategic planning initiative that this board has embarked upon, and I will tell you that resoundingly, in a thunderous way, those folks said that it's the dedicated and committed staff that work here in Lacy Schools that makes a difference for them, for their children, for this community. And a full complement of activities to enhance student participation in school. Yes, the athletic programs are very important to us because it fills the opportunities for our students to be with outstanding adult mentors, working together as teams, showing respect, learning patience, problem-solving, discipline, goal-setting. Yes, they are very important to us, and we're going to continue to commit our focus to that as well. And this budget is fiscally responsible to the taxpayer. It does not go to cap. There were some cap opportunities that this board had at their hands, and they chose not to go to the maximum amount that they could have, and that certainly is a budget that's fiscally responsible to the taxpayer. So at this time, I know that many of you came out to hear the budget presentation, and myself, Dr. Clark, we're here to answer any questions that you might have. I think that we'll keep a time limit on it because this is an opportunity for the board as well to continue with their business, and we're certainly available over the next few weeks if you do have any questions. But I would like to see if there are any questions either from the board or from anyone here tonight? Yes?
I'm trying to understand unallocated employee benefit compensation.
I'll repeat the question for you.
Okay. Unallocated employee benefit compensation for non-absences, which doubled from 11 million to 21 million in the past two years.
It looks like you're reading off of a document. Can you tell me what the title is? Are you reading off of an advertised?
Lacy Township School District Changes in Net Position Accrual Basis of Accounting Last Nine Fiscal Years Exhibit J2, Page 1 of 3.
Okay, so from the cap report. So the question is regarding the undistributed expenditures for attendances, for attendance, rather?
I'm just wondering, where does the $20 million come from?
The $20 million comes from the general fund of the budget, so it's part of that tax levies, state aid, this language revenue.
So that's embedded in the current budget structure?
Correct.
Okay. And one other question. There are technology alternatives to what you're proposing, especially for the park testing program and its centralized, zero-platform terminal with large back office servers, which is much more efficient.
Are you talking about a thin client?
I'm talking about a zero client. So it's efficient, it cannot be hacked, and it cannot be manipulated by anyone internally or externally. I would like to bring in a consultant at the next meeting to go over that information. He's well-renowned, and he does this for a living.
So, sure. So it sounds like you have a connection with someone who has another option that we're proposing. If you wouldn't mind, Mr. Syak is here tonight. Mr. Syak, will you raise your hand? There he is. So maybe after the meeting, we can make a connection?
Yes, thank you.
Good, okay. All right. At this time, Mrs. Torell, I think my presentation is completed. Thank you.
Thank you. As we're readjusting microphones, I just wanted to thank Dr. Brower, Dr. Clark, Mr. Savage, Mr. Syak, who you saw wave his hand in the back, and all the administrators here. I don't think what people realize, if you're friends with some of the administrators, maybe you have heard, they have been working day and night. And when I say day and night, they were working over the weekend and probably almost every weekend the last couple of months. As you know, we're a big board, we have lots of questions, so it was a huge endeavor. Tonight is just the presentation, there's no action being taken on this budget tonight. Is there any other gentleman? And before we go into...
I'm sorry, excuse me. I did think of a question. I'm sorry, it took me a minute. You had mentioned that other positions were being cut out or reduced, but you didn't list them, is that correct? Like you had mentioned that there were others that were not listed?
Yes.
Okay, and is there a way to find out what those are?
I can tell you what they are. Currently, the board has expended funds, particularly at the high school, middle school, and some at the elementary, and I know that there are some principals here, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but where we would stipend and offer compensation to house after-school detention. So those positions, that extra compensation has been eliminated. So the administrators will need to come up with another way to have supervision for after-school detention. So typically, we pay someone to do that, and that has been eliminated.
So there's no stipend to cover people who watch the after-school detention?
Correct.
That's a problem. Okay, and then I do have another question that I know other people want to ask, but they're not, and that is that people are concerned about the aides, the nursing facility aides. I understand, I work in a district where we do not have them, but I do know that there are people who are wondering if you could maybe just address that because they're concerned about their children with peanut allergies or things. If you could explain how the coverage, if you know how the coverage would happen for that.
And just to note, we did have a slide on that, and it was discussed in detail, but we can discuss it again. Oh, I'm sorry. It seemed like, okay.
Because you understand it, I don't think that it's important.
Right, okay, thank you, thank you, Dennis. I guess it wasn't as clear as that.
I can explain it. So we have enjoyed and benefited from extra personnel in our school nursing offices. I can tell you in almost all schools in Ocean Amish County particularly, that position does not exist. There's a couple of reasons why. Several years ago, and when we continue to go through, read budget reviews, we need to make sure that we have parent professionals, instructional parent professionals need to be connected to a student's IP or programmatically. So that's one way you can have a parent professional in a budget. These positions are not mandated. How the health office will be managed by a nurse will be how it's done in every other school that I just mentioned in Amish and Ocean County. These positions do not typically exist. I know that it is going to be a change. We know that. But I have the highest level of confidence in our nurses and our administrators, and our administrators understand. You know, I was a school principal, I know and recall what that felt like, what that looked like, and it will be different when the nurse does go for lunch. There will need to be some coverage, and typically, there is a covering nurse that would just be on call if there was an issue, or we would. You know, God forbid there was a very serious situation where a child's injured, then we do what we always do, which is call for assistance, for medical assistance, for a medical responder. That's what it'll continue to look like. So I don't have any concerns with regard to that.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would like to just address a letter that I had sent to the school system in December regarding my special needs son, and addition, another summation of what I've heard today because I feel it's strongly important to have that backup personnel in the nursing school at Forkett River School in order for the school to run efficiently. I just would like to voice my opinion if I may.
And we're going to have public comment?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, we're going to have public comment in just a second, if you'd like to stand up and read it.
I didn't know at what point to do it, but I feel strongly that we need that backup, and I think it would be a devastating solution to take that backup from this school system because there's so many children who have special needs, and it's overwhelming for one nurse to try to take care of all of these children at the same time. We have an assistant there who is outstanding as well, and she provides a lot of support and a lot of knowledge, and is just as important as the nurse herself. So I just had a couple of, I know that we're short for time, but I did wrote some things down, and I just feel it's important. I mean, I have a son with special needs who's been through the ups and the downs, the ins and the outs, and I feel very wholeheartedly that it's important to have a support system in the nursing office. I mean, he has cystic fibrosis, he has type 2 diabetes, he just had his appendix out, and these absolutely wonderful staff, from the principal, from the top, from the nurses to the bottom, have been, have been wonderful. And I just want to voice my opinion. I think it's fair. I have to speak on behalf of the children who don't have voices.
Thank you, because there was going to be public comment. We're going to open up the floor.
And I just wanted to make sure that my voice was heard.
Thank you, thank you. But are there any other questions about the budget before we open up public comment? Am I missing anybody?
One question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Here, why don't we start? Here, question about the budget?
So you mentioned earlier that you have two thousand devices added to access points. I have two questions. Is there adequate funds allocated toward maintenance and repair? Your student needs are a brilliant idea, but they self-apply on these things, it's only two or three years. And I know my son, you know, breaks devices quite frequently at home. And then secondly, with adding 2,000 devices, there's going to be a significant increase between park testing requirements to bring for students and adding 2,000 devices, then you've increased your bandwidth of future students.
The bandwidth has been taken into consideration, and at this time, we believe we can have enough bandwidth to handle the devices. We've been increasing that over these past few years. With regard to the repair, those details will still continue to be worked out, just like we do with our STEM students. Parents have an option, if they would like, to purchase a small insurance policy to insure the device if they want to. The devices are going to be approximately $199, I think, a piece. So there are many...
Do you recall what the bandwidth is per school right now?
I'm sorry?
Do you recall what the bandwidth is per school?
I don't know the bandwidth. So total bandwidth per school?
We have, type out to the rural world in one day a day.
Okay, great, thank you.
And also...
Significantly, prior to that upgrade, we had 200 megahertz, so that's a significant increase. And we're constantly looking at monitoring that activity and sort of looking at whether she might have, what's going on.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. And just to also share, the school board is going to put together a technology committee. So if this budget is passed, and just to clarify, the budget hearing is May 4th at 6:00 p.m. Based on the turnout we have here, we, the, Dr. Brower and I have talked about an alternate location possibly for that, so we'll continue to talk about that, but it's at May 4th at 6:00 p.m. for the budget hearing. So if this moves forward, we are putting together a technology committee to work, candidate handling the administration. Are there any more questions on the budget before?
So I do have two questions. My first question is, so the schools that don't have health aides, how many of them have two nurses or something? And at that, when there is no nurse in the office, how many have an agency that automatically come on for lunch coverage?
So the schools that we surveyed only have one nurse in the nurse's office, and I...
How many of these schools did you survey?
All of them in Ocean Amish County. What was the other question?
And will there be automatic lunch coverage for the nurse?
Yeah, right now, the nurse takes lunch, and the nurse aide can't...
Cover the office.
Yeah, can't cover. So that happens right now.
Just to clarify, the, the health aides are not trained medical professionals. So just, just that, I think that's what Dr. Brower was trying to speak to. So that's why if there's a medical emergency, you still need a nurse, and there's a loading nurse.
All right, and my second question is, while I do love the ideas of technology, the fact that we're trading textbooks, we're not buying more textbooks to buy more computers, that will most likely be broken, and I would be willing to bet that most students already have disturbs me. I'm an alumni of Lacy. When I went here, there wasn't enough textbooks for us to go around. I'm assuming there is still not enough textbooks to go around. I'm also assuming there's teachers in the room that will agree with me and are shaking their heads right now. So why would we buy computers and not books?
Now, trust me. Your, your question is an interesting one, so you are suggesting that you might think that the students would prefer having tech... that the students would prefer having textbooks over having a technology device. And that isn't exactly what the research would suggest to us when we follow the national trends on one-to-one initiative. And, you know, our students need to be competitive and once that textbook is published, that print is written, there's no changing. When you take a look at these interactive textbooks, and I agree with you, some of our students do have devices and they, they demand, they want online opportunities for resources. They would prefer to have that on demand rather than carrying a large textbook. So I think we're saying the same thing with regard to getting information. I'm also not aware that there is a shortage of textbooks. I know that some of our textbooks are ready to be, they're, you know, they're, they're older, but I'm not aware that there is a shortage of textbooks.
Okay, and that's, that makes a lot of sense, but my question then would be, for the schools that are not getting these computers, because we're not furnishing all the students, every student is issued for the computer right away, are those schools, so only the high school is getting it, so the middle school, Mill Pond, Forkett River, Lenoxa Harbor, and Cedar Creek, are their textbooks going to be replanted?
There is no plan in this budget for any new textbooks.
Are there any more questions in regard to the budget presentation? Because I am going to open the floor up for public comment. I don't see any other hands.
I got one. Can anyone tell me what the, what these cuts will produce or increase for the budget? Like a dollar amount?
Total cuts, what, what measure?
Yeah, like the health aide.
About a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
A hundred and fifty thousand. Overall, how much, what is that rate of spending?
It's just about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Overall, with that three-dollar increase in the tax rate, is that about...
Oh, no, that's, that's about a half percent.
Right, go ahead. Okay, good. I'll be better prepared with just that.
Any other questions in regards to budget? Now, oh, because we are, we are opening up the floor for public comment. So I don't want people to think they're not going to get a chance to share their comment, okay. The, and a wise gentleman asked me at another meeting, why do we put public comment where we do? It's always so that the public has an opportunity to address any concerns they have to the school board before we carry on with the rest of our business and have whatever votes we're going to have that night. So that's why it's before the school board votes, so they have an opportunity to have input. So at this time, I'm opening it up to public comment, please raise your hand. Please come take the podium when I call on you so that we know who you are, state your name and your address. Mr. Ryan?
My name is Michael Ryan, I speak on behalf of the Lacey Township Education Association. Our association represents teachers, custodians, secretarial staff, grounds maintenance, health powers. I'm here today to talk about some trends I'm seeing with the board over the last few years that's kind of concerning to us. It seems like every year we're eliminating positions and while we're not terminating jobs, we're losing these positions through attrition, which means people are retiring. However, the problem with that is that as we move forward with this policy or this procedure, it's really hurting our staff. The number of teachers and staff that we have here in Lacey has decreased significantly over the last three or four years. With those decreases, it causes a disparity among the teaching staff and the support staff as well. Class sizes are getting bigger as opposed to getting smaller. Yes, our student enrollment is going down, but ideal situation would be to have a smaller teacher, or smaller student-to-teacher ratio. With the health aides, there's a lot of information I think the public needs to be aware of. These facts are from three of our buildings, just over the last couple of weeks up to today, actually the last couple of months up till today. Forkett River School since September up to this morning had serviced three thousand six hundred and thirty-five students. That's just, we're not even at the end of the school year yet. With, out of those three thousand six hundred, a thousand of the, over a thousand of those were with diabetic needs. We had three hundred, over three hundred that had medication needs and two hundred and seventy-five screenings. Those were the hearing, nose, vision, those kind of things. At Mill Pond alone this year, there were seven hundred and fifty annual screenings. Every student is screened at Mill Pond. Three thousand five hundred and seventeen students were problems that came in, just regular illnesses or some kind of problem. Four hundred gym passes were served. For those of you that aren't familiar, a gym pass is when a student is medically not cleared to participate in gym. So a doctor, a nurse's pass has to be written for that. And then again, when that student is allowed to return back to gym, they have to get a pass that allows them to return back to gym. Also, at Mill Pond, the pre-K enrollments for the, for the preschool coming in and the pre-kidergarten students coming in, special ed needs with special need students, medicine during the day is a factor. Fifth grade immunization letters that go out, all students in sixth grade have to have their booster immunizations, and also sports forms and physicals. Also, it's been a board policy and a district policy that when a special need student comes in, there's a lot of toileting issues that are a big concern at younger elementary grades. And so it's been a policy that as the nurse is working with that student, the power of the health aide there is also to act as a support staff or witness to what's going on. One is a liability for a protection for that nurse and also protection for the student, the student needs to service them. So that's a big concern that a lot of I know parents and educators I spoke to in the buildings are having with this. A big stat that I'd like to read or share today is the ones with the high school. In our current high school, there were seven thousand one hundred and sixty-six students served and that's just till this morning. Out of that, there were also seventy-six staff members. Remember ladies and gentlemen, the nurses don't also just service students, but they also service the staff members in that building. God forbid, we've had instances in the past where a teacher's gone down, an ambulance had a call. So when the nurse is out of the room handling those types of emergencies, if we didn't have a gate or a power there in the nurse's office to help facilitate, the office would be closed during that time. There's been more than eleven hundred, sorry, eleven hundred sports physicals. Lacey, we pride ourselves on being a very big sports town, we are. But again, with those sports and there's new restrictions, the policy with concussion testing and all kinds of things, the nurses have to do whatever they have to deal with physicals for the students. Most of those physicals take about two to three hours a day. So you're talking eleven hundred students just in the high school alone. It's a pretty chunk, big chunk of change. If you look at the nurse, the National Association of School Nurses, there's a ratio that they give you and it should be one nurse to every seven hundred and fifty students. Apparently at the high school we have thirteen hundred students. So we've been just for nursing compliance with the recommendation, we're not at where we need to be just for nurses. Having that health, health aide in there, yes, they're not certified to give medical attention. However, they are CPR trained, they are CPR certified and they do preserve, they do serve as a level of screening for. When you go to a hospital ER room, most of you are triaged by a nurse that screens or someone that takes your, your, your vitals, that kind of thing, and what your problem is to assess the need of care. So that is a big loss to our nurses that they're going to have. Also, I'd like to talk about something that was brought up. The secretarial positions, over the years, we're eliminating one secretarial position accordingly to this budget if it goes through for next year. Over the last couple of years, we've lost a huge amount of our secretarial staff. They've been spread very, very thin and it puts more of a burden. I know this firsthand directly, a lot of parents that are in this audience or even board members that are up here, a lot of concerns come out of the high school guidance department. We used to have six counselors, we've been down to five. I know that there's been a recommendation every year to get six counselors to help alleviate that load. However, unfortunately, we have been unable to get those in our cash budgets. So again, it's something that's not in our budget for next year. Yet as kids are getting more, more requirements for college applications and things like that, it's really stretching our counseling department to them in. And I know a lot of parents have called and complained, but you have to understand the amount of students that they're servicing is a very high amount and the demands it's put on that job, especially in recent years, has been a lot more, a lot more demanding on the counselors as well.
Mr. Ryan, Q.
Yes.
Respectfully, would you just address the board?
Absolutely, sorry.
I know the camera is an attractive distance, but please address it.
Sure. I also have concerns with the curriculum moving forward. I know, I know in past years with the curriculum, it's always been a concern, especially at the lower elementaries. I know one of the district initiatives is to have cohesiveness throughout the elementary schools. And moving forward, a lot of teachers are on board with this. We're, I have to say, we're kind of disappointed that moving forward next year, we're not going to be having those elementary curriculum in the reading and language arts programs, which I think is really going to affect our scores moving forward down the future. I know supplies are another issue that has been cut, building supplies. You know, every year teachers are asked to do more and more, whether it's requiring from the state, whether it's requiring from the district. Yet when Chapter 78 went into effect, teachers in this room are taking them less money than they were for many, many years. And as, as a member of this district, I think the public also needs to be made aware that when this district was in trouble a few years ago, they did take that freeze. We did that to save jobs, to save the people that we work with. And it seems like every year we're fighting, every year, to get back to where we were. We're not even where we were, let alone moving forward. With these elimination of these positions, it really hurts our district moving forward. We're losing senior veteran teachers, yet we talk about creating young, creative, innovative teachers, yet we're not giving them the opportunity to come into our district because we're eliminating positions before they even have a chance to come into the district. So I would just like to bring this to the board's attention and before moving forward, really look into this health aides, I think, when the community hears about it. Just want to thank the board for their time, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anne Elmer. I want to thank you for allowing me to be an advocate for my son, Charles Elmer, who is currently attending Forkett River School in the fourth grade under the direction of the wonderful Mrs. Holmwood. I had previously in December, sent a letter to the board, a letter of appreciation, just letting you know, and I'll read it to you verbatim. I feel that it's necessary to write this letter because so often we hear about the bad and very seldom hear about the good. It is with deep appreciation that I inform you of the outstanding staff you have on board at your Forkett River District. I'm especially grateful for Principal Eric Fiedler as well as both nurse, Nurse Mrs. Mattoon and health aide, Mrs. Barley. They have gone well above and beyond what any mother could expect from a school system. Your staff has been consistently providing outstanding care for Charlie for many near years now. My son entered Forkett River School at age three for his diagnosis of apraxia. In addition to his apraxia, he was also diagnosed with mild cystic fibrosis at birth and most recently, type 1 diabetes. I cannot begin to tell you the highest level of medical, emotional support Charlie has received. Your staff has always gone well above and beyond whatever, what any mother ever could have hoped for. Their communication and administering of intricate healthcare needs and emotional support are far superior to any school I have ever been associated with. They are consistently on top, on top of Charlie's constant struggles and well surpass my expectations. In addition to the aforementioned staff, the entire school has been impeccable in providing the ultimate care for Charlie's special needs. In summation, I am exceedingly grateful to all of your staff and for what they have done for my son, Charlie. It means more to me than you will ever know. I will always remember the kindness and the dedication of your employees at the Forkett River School District. They will forever hold a very special place in my heart. Okay, now this was in December. Since then, my son has an additional problem, he had to have his appendix removed. And since he had his appendix removed, he was sent home from surgery, but because of his diabetes, was sent back into the hospital with complications. Therefore, was in the hospital in and out for a three-week span, okay? He recently returned to school today and I have a part-time job at the school, which I'm very grateful for. And I'm also an active volunteer at the school, which again, I am greatly grateful for. And I just wanted to add a summary of what I've learned today and what I feel should happen with the medical staff. So I'll read this to you, I'm sorry if I'm a little nervous. I'm a little bit exhausted from all of the things that we've been going through. Today was my son's first day back at school. In summary, what I am trying to say is that each and every staff member is essential to our children's development in the Lacey Township school system. This safeguard is not limited to our outstanding school nurse, Mrs. Mattoon, but also our nurse's aide, Charlie calls her, Mrs. Patty, who is a constant support to Charlie's intricate personal needs. Charlie feels extremely comfortable with Mrs. Patty and, and to lose her support would be a huge mistake and a major setback for my son, Charlie. Please, I am begging you, as a parent, to reconsider your decision to eliminate our nursing assistance and find a way to make the present system stay in place. I was always taught since I was a young child, if something is not broken, don't fix it. A cutback in this category is not the answer. Again, I believe it would be a major setback. Please take into consideration all of our beautiful young children who need, who need their voices heard. We as parents must speak up for them. After all, they are our future leaders of America. There is a way we can make this work. It is never a good thing to hear your child has major illnesses, but it is extremely comforting to know we have a strong support system within our school district. Thank you so much for granting me this opportunity of a mother's voice to be heard.
You all would like to comment? I guess there's something to read up.
My name's Kristy Cottrell. I don't know if I could, I want to just piggyback on everything.
And I'm sorry, what's your address?
441 Lake Farnigan Drive North. My son is also at Forkett River Elementary School and I must commend our nursing staff as well. He was diagnosed with type 1 diabetes in second grade, he's now in third grade. And as a parent, it is a major struggle. I know my husband and I, on a daily basis, we are on top of him with everything that he needs to do. And to know that I can leave him at school and that these nurses call me and when I'm at work to tell me what his numbers are, how many carbs are, you know, what he's doing, just gives me so much comfort knowing that he's there. And just, you know, everything that she said is, you know, I'm emotional just as much as you are because, you know, without Mrs. B, without Mrs. Mattoon, honestly, I, I don't know, you know, like how comfortable I would be leaving him. And I know, I, I don't know if there's a, you know, what the right thing to do is, but, you know, having the health aide there, when Mrs. Mattoon is not there, he's comfortable with her injecting shots or doing what, not, not her injecting shots, but I'm sorry.
You scared me for a second.
No, she does not, but if there is a substitute nurse in there, like he's come home times and said, you know, like he doesn't, it's, because there's not a comfort level there. You know, someone's injecting you with something, you need that comfort and knowing that Mrs. B is there, someone that's a regular, really is, is, goes a long way. And, you know, this, she'll call me, you know, and say, Mrs. Mattoon is out today, there is a nurse coming in. And I, I, you know, those of us that are parents, you can understand how, how much that means to us. So again, just putting my thoughts out there. I don't know what you can do, but if you could reconsider that, it only is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I don't know if it's something you should reconsider. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If we could just hold on just a second, just make sure to raise your hand so I don't have a way to commit at the same time, thank you. And if we could just, thank you, come on down, sorry. And if we could just hold the comments so we can be respectful of everybody. If you'd like to make a comment, please feel free to raise your hand and take the podium. Okay. If you could just state your name and address, please.
Sure. Stuart McKenzie, 119 Oak Street, Forkett River. Up here, we weren't sure. Somebody asked how much you're going to save by eliminating your five eights. Was it $150,000?
Yes, sir.
And I heard somebody say that, so I have to send... Okay. So a half a cent on your average $250,000 home would save that family $12.50 a year. So I'm thinking... (laughter) Instead of eliminating these aides, if this average family living in an average house would eliminate one pizza a year, you can keep your aides. That's all I got to say. Keep your aides.
I don't know if the pizzerias will like that.
They'll live with just one. There's enough of them around.
Any other here? Any other hand? Mike, Mr. Bidnick.
My name is Richard A. Bidnick, Chair of the Lacey Citizens for Responsible Government. First, I'd like to make a comment about something that Mr. Savage made about a comment that another person had made concerning the CAFR report. I believe the $20 million that is listed in there is not actually a budget, that is a liability. That liability is for all of the sick days that the school district will end up paying out when a teacher leaves.
I don't believe that's the case. He said unallocating benefits, which, which in the budget is your regular health benefits, prescription, that are...
He wasn't talking about the budget, he was looking at the audit. Right. Okay. Now, to get on with my comments, there are 1,027,145 reasons for you not to approve this budget. The Lacey Citizens for Responsible Government recommends, does the school board vote no, on any budget increase whatsoever under the current conditions and state of affairs in this community. Many families are still struggling with the after effects of Superstorm Sandy, with the Great Recession, and the troubled job market here in New Jersey. New Jersey is already the most overtaxed state in the nation. Seven positions with a 15% reduction in the student body is like telling the struggling taxpayers, "Let them eat cake." In our view, it's morally and financially unethical and imprudent to increase taxes with so many struggling households in this community and with the very poor results we are seeing with student achievement. Students make a great school. The product that you are putting out is what makes a great school, not buildings, it is the students. Students who are actually achieving and going on to do great things. There are some, there should be many, many more. How do you justify increasing spending and raising taxes when so many people are just one paycheck for being out in the street? Many of you who sit on this body can afford a tax increase, whatever it may be, and are more fortunate than many others in this community. I must stress that you represent everyone when you want to keep this, when you, when you vote on the budget, not just for yourself or the special interest groups who want to keep the status quo at all costs. Who represents us, I ask? The struggling families, the elderly, the house family, those individuals working three jobs just to put food on the table, and of course, the unemployed. I implore each and every one of you to look into your hearts and souls and realize that increasing taxes for this school district is not the answer. The school board should instruct the administration of this school to leave no stone unturned, to squeeze every penny out of the budget like so many of us have had to do in our own households. So there will be no tax increase on people who are already taxed enough. The board sets the agenda. I ask that you do your job. The school board member who got the most votes in our most recent election ran on a platform of austerity and budget restraint. I ask this body to abide by the wishes of the electorate, who are all, you are all accountable to. If the final budget that is approved in May has even $1 in increased spending, we are prepared to seek a citizens' referendum to reduce the school's budget by 10% each year for the next three years. Lacey, so this silence!
Excuse me, Mr. Bidnick, that is not appropriate.
It's not appropriate for people to make comments when I'm giving my talk.
Sir, this is public comment, this is not your forum, this is for the whole public.
Okay.
So thank you.
Lacey citizens should not have to make a decision about paying their taxes or buying their medicine, paying the mortgage for medical bills, and taking one more penny of our money is not a solution, it is a problem. We need new ideas, new leadership, and individuals not unwilling to accept the status quo. I ask all of you this question. Do you know who Michelle Rhee is?
No, I do not.
Okay.
I do.
That's good to hear.
But just to set the record, see, I say this every time, this is not a debate, this is time for you to publicly talk and share your views with the school board on the agenda.
I know her full record.
Right. Excuse me?
I know her full record.
Oh, good, I'm glad to hear that. Ms. Rhee is a leading public school educator who took on the Washington DC failing school district several years ago with the blessing of the mayor and made striking changes to the schools in our nation's capital. She recognized the many problems, was not afraid to speak out to the teachers' union, the school board, and special interest groups that had entrenched the education system. She is a maverick, and we need someone of her caliber to take the lead for our schools, someone who recognizes enough is enough and things have to change. Money is not the answer. A new form of leadership and ideas are. Please read her book, it's proactively titled Radical. I have it right here. A term that is so endearing to me. Michelle Rhee's views and ideas encourage thinking outside of the box and understands that continuing down the road we've been going is a losing battle. It's a losing battle for the students, the taxpayers, the educators, and everyone who understands that a quality education does not have to eat you out of house and home. I implore the school board to reconvene the defunct Citizens Advisory Committee for the budget, to give the public an honest voice in how this school district is administered, financially managed, and to have input on the public budget, not just a hearing where everything is a fait accompli. I thank you all for giving me this opportunity to speak. You may not, you may not agree with me, but at least I speak for many people who in this community...
Oh, please, please, please.
2,590. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just remember, when you're coming up, you're speaking for yourself. That's all you can do in regard to public comment, you're speaking for yourself.
Edward Law, 2130 Hollywood Drive, I am a staff member of the facility in the second floor of this building. I just heard the word austerity measures mentioned, President. If anybody in this room Googles right now austerity measures, nine countries rioted when they reduced or stopped the tax base increase, and yes, we understand to the homeowner that's struggling, you just mentioned me. I've worked two or three jobs, my wife is employed as a police dispatcher in this town, and we still struggle. I want to know how much, if we could use it in the equation, how many district employees are as close to foreclosure or in foreclosure with their homes? Now, without a boundary, without a context, without a history of what's really going on, inside job, Madam President, I suggest to the board, or anybody in this room, or anybody listening, it's a documentary about what went on with the big banks, and that leads me into a segue into Standard and Poor's was mentioned in the last meeting, the rating agency. Standard and Poor's 1.5 billion settlement today will let the world's biggest rating company move beyond a bruising legal battle over the top grades it gave to some private mortgage bonds. 1.4 billion dollar settlement and a separate settlement with the California Public and Police Retirement System, or CALPS, to resolve the claims. Now, my question to the board is, we had a former CDO of Goldman Sachs leave and become a governor and a senator. Now, he went on to MF Global, and I just read in Bloomberg's News the day before yesterday, he's thinking about starting another hedge fund. But the reason I went there, how do we know? Because part of this settlement in California, the retirement system's overall dollar was affected by the ratings Standards and Poor's gave, which were inaccurate. So overseas investors bought some of the exotic instruments that were part of the calculus for their pension. I think the same thing's happened in New Jersey, but here's the problem with a zero tax base or 10% reduction. I lose my house. Now, do we have staff members that are struggling paycheck to paycheck and working three jobs? That's me. So I heard this austerity measures, I challenge the board respectfully, and the homeowners, of which I am one, but not for long. I would like to know, one, that equation about the average house price in this town, could we confirm that, I respectfully ask? Second, is there any calculus gauging how many homes are in foreclosure in the town, and then how many homes are in foreclosure or pre-foreclosure with full-time staff members? That would indicate whether the salaries we're providing for district members enable you to live in the home, put your kids through the school system, and maybe retire with some functional income. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Heather Hicks, 319 Annapolis Lane in Forkett River. I wasn't planning on saying anything tonight, but I, as I was listening, the first thing that I want to say is that our students are not a product, as some people would say. And I think that, as you said, Dr. Brower, at the strategic planning meeting, it came out that all of our parents and community members felt it was very important that our staff, our caring staff that do go above and beyond is basically the main thing. That's the main thing in Lacey. So I just want to reiterate, our students are not a product, they're children. As far as some, one idea to cut something out of this budget, I would say, if you're planning on providing a one-to-one device for all staff, just in high school alone, you have, what, 100 teachers? That's almost $20,000. So there really is no reason to have a one-to-one device for all staff. I know in the district I teach, if I need to use a Provebook so that I can do that, first of all, you can go on Google Docs at home if you're doing Google-based lesson planning. But you can also check out a device from the school and bring it home if you need to do something device specific. So, you know, that's $20,000, that's just not necessary, is it cool? Yeah, but I'm pretty sure that people would rather have more staff if that's going to cover one paraprofessional's, you know, salary for the year, then I would think that that would be more important. Also, you're talking about for 360 new devices, $71,000, that's just for the first, I think you mentioned 360 devices for students for the first year, and then increasing after that. I just want to caution against jumping in too much to the one-to-one device. First of all, many students have devices at home. Maybe you could do some surveys to find out, I'm sure you probably have as far as how many students have devices they can use. But I don't, I don't know why that would be necessary for us to supply to every student, especially if the student could possibly check out devices the way that a teacher might be able to check out a device. And to, just be careful not to jump on the bandwagon with technology, every student having to have some things to do with technology provided by the school. In fact, just while the presentation was going, I looked up an article from NEA Today from January, and which quotes the National Educational Policy Center, personalized instruction, which was what you were touting as the main thing for one-to-one device, tailoring paid viewer content and lessons with technology. The research evidence is minimal on this, that it improves instructional outcomes. So is technology important? Absolutely. Is our technology already fantastic here? Yes, it is. It's already ahead of a lot of places. So, you know, I would just say, you know, please reconsider spending $20,000 for teacher devices and another $71,000 for student devices, and maybe reconsider. Also, just one more quick note would be that the $150,000 for the health paras, I believe, is about equivalent to one regional supervisor that was just replaced. So I don't know much about that, but that was mentioned to me. So, you know, let's think about the staff and the thing that makes Lacey what it is, which is the staff.
Good evening, members of the board, Lacey Township residents. My name is Peter DePrado, I live right around the corner, 111 Fox Hollow Drive, Lenoka Harbor. First of all, I would like to say thank you. Good to see a lot of people here to come out, no matter what you believe in, but to support the schools, support the town, it's a very good thing. Secondly, I'd like to say, at this time, I'd like to thank Gavin Rossi, who runs, if you don't know, who runs the Lacey Reporter. And the last couple, I'd say, month or two, he gave me the opportunity, which was non-paid, to write a column called "The Lacey Insider," and I had a very good time with it, I was out of passion for this town. However, at this time, I just want to publicly say that I have asked Gavin to step down from that position so I can come here and to the Township Committee as a private citizen, which I really am. And so that's why I'm here. So I only have, tonight I have one question, and respectfully, my question is to Mr. Schubert here. What happened once, a couple of weeks ago, you mentioned about the S and P downgrade?
And I apologize to interrupt, but it's, like I keep mentioning, it is public comment, so feel free to make comments, but it's not a debate and it's not a conversation.
Fine. So I'll give my comment, and then hopefully, I'm hoping he can answer. My comment is this, a couple of weeks ago, you had mentioned that in the S and P downgrade with the school system, that you said it had to do with the Township Committee and not paying, giving the money to the school. And last Township Committee meeting, I was there present, and Mayor Gary Quinn stated publicly that he had spoken to the CFO and to find out, investigate what was going on. And he came out and said, he found out that there was a gentleman's agreement, in which, if you've seen the committee meeting, you will know, Mr. Savage and the former CFO had a gentleman's agreement for the summer months that the money was going to be held because it was, really wasn't needed because the school was closed, which is, you can understand that. However, he said that at no time was any money by the Township Committee stopped. So now my... So now my real question would be, okay, I haven't seen any kind of comment by you through your campaign page or anywhere, in any of the newspapers or anywhere, where you have, you know, rebuttled the mayor on that. And so the people of Lacey Township, you know, have, know what's going on. And so that was really my question. Okay? And that's all I really have to say. If you want to wait until you have your, you know...
Well, first, if...
Oh, I was just going to say, Mr. Savage can address that.
Okay. Mr. DePrado, there are times when the Township and myself, we do make arrangements for funds, but not at June 30. And four out of the last six years, they did not pay my June 30 payment on time. The last couple, last year they did, the two years prior to that, we worked out something, but the two prior to that, I did not agree. In fact, I did not even find out that we weren't going to pay until the last week of the year. But I have payroll to pay, I have notice to pay, and I was not receiving that money. Now, the reason why I need the money is the state doesn't pay us on time.
Well, they changed the $12 million that the state gave.
They don't pay us on time. The federal government doesn't pay us on time. So that money is important for me to get by the end of my school year, I'm paying final payrolls and final bills. So very important. So, yeah, there's times during the course of the year we may work something out, but not, not at June 30. I need my money at that point in time.
The law is very clear, Mr. DePrado. Those are trust funds. The township obligated to collect the money for the school district and the county because the county and the school district are not tax collectors. The money that's collected by either the township on behalf of the county and on behalf of the school district are trust funds. That means that there is, there is no if, and, or, or buts about it. That money is supposed to be turned over to the county and to the school board in accordance with the approved schedule. The law is so strong that if the township, for some reason, whatever reason it might be, and the law doesn't care what it is, but if for some reason the township doesn't have the money, they have to go out and borrow.
And during our recent meeting with the town, with the committee of the board and downtown, we made sure the board that they will pay their funds on time at June 30.
And I think, just to clarify, it's not their funds, that's the thing. They're just the collecting agency, so that money should be there to pass forward. And as Mr. Savage did say, we did meet, we meet every single year, and we reminded the mayor of that, because we meet every year with the Township Committee, and we pride ourselves on trying to have an open door and communication with them. So I hope that kind of clarifies some misconceptions.
And I'd like to add, thank you all for your comments. And I do want to clarify, I believe what I said was, it was very frustrating for us. There were two items in that report that were the big highlights on that report. One involved late payments, dispersment of public funds to the school district from the township, which is their primary role from the township's perspective, is to disperse public funds to the taxing entities. That is frustrating. And number two, that it was cited about our surplus, which we've always agreed at this level, that we did not want to overburden the taxpayer with having that much surplus. And the one time that it got a little bit high, the state actually took those funds from us. So that's why I explained those two areas. It was very frustrating because it was hard to control them. But I at no time mentioned anyone's name, and I'm offended that my name was mentioned when I chose not to use my microphone for political purposes. So I hope that answered your question.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other hands? Please wave, because there's a lot of people. I'm missing anybody. Nobody else? Close the board to public comment. I thank everybody for coming up. It's important to hear everybody's voice, so I really do appreciate everybody coming out. And it looks like people are leaving. That's okay, but remember, May 4th, we're going to take a break. May 4th at 6:00 PM, and we will announce the location.